All right. Good evening and welcome to our February 2nd, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting, and happy Groundhog Day to everyone. If those of you who could, please rise and join us in the presence of Mr. Putnam. Would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? Seeing none, delegations, or anyone that would like to address the board? Mr. Schultz, if you'd come up, give us your name and address, please, sir.
Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane, East Lime. If I could approach the bench for one moment.
Sure.
I want to be able to speak clearly, so if I'm not being clear with the mask, I'd take it down.
For the speaking part, that'd be fine.
All right. Yeah, I'm attending the Board of -- first off, thank you folks for the services that you've been providing to the town. And some of you are new to the Board of Selectmen, and we appreciate the fact that you're doing what you do for us. I'm attending the Board of Selectmen meeting this evening to express on the record my displeasure with the action of majority decision by the Board of Selectmen to establish the ARP Ad hoc Committee. The voters of East Lime elected you, the members of the Board of Selectmen, to keep under review the present and future needs of the town. We have a long-range capital plan of department requests that prioritize the needs of the town and is approved at the town meeting and is frequently referred to when items come up for special town meeting for approval of these said expenditures. I have a copy of that with me as well. In the upper left-hand corner, it does state right there, there's a long-range capital plan, department requests within this document. So I already have that. Some items may not qualify for the ARP funds. In my opinion, we already have a plan and elected officials with the competence and the trust of the public to make such financial decisions. To call out the appointment of individuals other than those elected jeopardizes public trust, and even the appointment of the members of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance causes, in my opinion, the appearance of impropriety, as they also will be on the voting end of the recommendations of that committee to the Board of Selectmen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else wish to address the board? Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Next thing will be the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th -- or the -- that should be special meeting of -- no, regular meeting of January 19th. It was the one on the 5th that was that special meeting. So anyways, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 19th, 2022, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any comments, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? They carried unanimously. Moving on, we have the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of February 2nd, 2022 in the amount of $7,117.78.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? They carried unanimously. Moving on to new business, the boardwalk repairs. We're going to table that. Dave and Putnam and Bill Sher would like to get a little more concrete data on the cost of that before they bring it forward to us. So the intent would not be to start any type of work on that till probably April or May timeframe, correct, Dave?
Correct, yes.
So we do have time to look at that. And we do have that FEMA money left from Hurricane Sandy that we got a year and a half or so ago. The next item is the --
Before you go on, is there any possibility that any of the rescue funds might be available for that use as well?
It could be, but we have ample funds in that FEMA, and we did talk about that last year about setting aside the funds in that account to take care of the boardwalk repairs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Possible action is the abandonment of the Riverhead Cemetery. We have a few people here that can talk to this a little bit, but basically it's a cemetery up in the north end of town, right near where the old Lulu's was, and where they're talking about possibly putting a service station and convenience store. It's been -- the association really does not exist anymore, and the East Lime Cemetery Association has been maintaining that. So this resolution would be to turn it over to the town, and whereby then the town could actually officially start maintaining it, and also get an easement through the company that purchased the property up there to allow access to that. Right now, they have to -- the Riverhead Cemetery Association would have to be the ones to do it, and they don't have really anyone that can do it. Is there -- Mary or anybody would like to come up and talk to this, or anything to add to that?
Did you have any other questions?
I don't know. Is there any -- I can ask you. Mary is the -- Mary Cotillo is the Secretary of the Riverhead Cemetery Association and does not have the authority to sign on behalf of the association. And as you can see, the only way we can have, you know, the association itself vote now is to do a global search for all remaining blood relatives of people that are interred there, and, you know, that would be a daunting task, to say the least. And Mary, anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, just one little correction I'd like to give you for the title of our association. We are the Historic East Lime Cemetery Association, not just East Lime Cemetery Association. That's a separate issue, a separate group.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mary?
Any other?
Is it continued to be maintained by East Lime?
Oh, yes, it will be. As we've been doing, it will continue. But now, we have to have the ability to sign a document allowing us to have this right-of-way or, you know, into the facility, because there are still people who are interred there that people go up to visit the cemetery, too. They didn't have the ability to sign that, because they don't have any officers to do that nor to convey this over to us, so this is the only way to do that. This will allow -- once this is done, we'll have another resolution to allow us to sign a document giving us the easement to get to the -- for people to get to the cemetery. Also, I guess years ago, the gate was stolen off the cemetery.
Oh, yes. It was a very fancy iron gate.
Back when --
It was stolen years ago.
Yeah, back when metal was so -- worth so much money. So the people developing the property have offered to also replace that once they -- once we sign the document with them. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
So now, are we going to tonight vote on this resolution?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And I do want to make certain that it's very clearly stated that it is a right-of-way to the cemetery.
That has been conveyed to the people that know that, as well as so does the town attorney who drafted the resolution. They're aware of that. And what the town attorney told me, to quote them, "Once the town owns it, the town can sign the easement and the right-of-way."
Thank you.
Okay, so I need to -- have you read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution, acquisition of Riverhead Cemetery by the Town of East Lime as an abandoned cemetery, whereas the Riverhead Cemetery is one of the ancient cemeteries in the town. It was established in 1915 and is owned by the Riverhead Cemetery Association, Incorporated, parentheses RCA. And whereas the RCA articles of association provide that the owners, called members, include, quote, "Any person now owning or who shall hereafter purchase a lot in said cemetery," end quote, and, quote, "Any person related by blood or marriage to a lot owner or a person buried in said cemetery," end quote. It is impossible to identify all the current members, as any relative by blood or marriage located anywhere in the world is a member. And whereas the RCA is a dormant corporation and is without funds, with only one individual remaining who was properly elected as a trustee/officer, under the RCA organizational documents and Connecticut law, said individual does not have the authority to act unilaterally on behalf of the RCA. And whereas the records of the RCA reflect that no lots have been sold within the previous 40 years, and during the previous 10 years, the lots of graves have not been maintained except for maintenance provided by the Town of East Line in the form of annual appropriations to the Historic East Lime Cemetery Association, Incorporated, which maintains the grounds of ancient cemeteries located within the town and in the form of occasional maintenance by the town's Public Works Department. It is resolved that the Board of Selectmen commence the statutory procedure described in Section 19A-308A of the Connecticut General Statutes to acquire ownership of the abandoned cemetery known as the Riverhead Cemetery, and authorize the first selectmen to publish such notices and schedule such hearings and file such papers and take such other actions as may be necessary to comply with the requirements of said statute.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's for the second. Any discussion heard? All right. Okay. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. We're just going to touch really briefly on the --
Before we go on, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and thank the Historic Cemetery Commission, again, a prime example of volunteerism in the town, who worked very hard to preserve what I believe are somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 or 13 small cemeteries such as this. And they do this with their own time and effort and a very minimal amount of support, financial support from the town.
Very well --
Thank you.
Very well stated. And a few years ago, we had them make a presentation to us. Once we're done with budget and we get into a little less busy time of the year, it might be nice to have them come back and make a presentation if they'd be willing to do so. I think that would help out, because it's an education for a lot of us. So, thank you. Moving on, and this is just for the Historic Society lease at Flanders Firehouse, which is the old dispatch center. I've talked to -- basically what -- I was doing some discussion with town attorney yesterday on this, and right now, there's a few things that we need to discuss further. There's a floor plan that -- because there's that room that is designated as a communications backup for our dispatch center and so forth like that, too. They said we need to specify that, so we're going to get a floor plan, so that will be specified. Also, since the Historical Society would like a couple-month history of electrical bills, because then they'll know what is the normal electric bill for that town on a month basis to support that. So anything above and beyond that, we'd have a better idea of what would be required as far as them for payment for electrical purposes. And another thing, too, is they know that they're going to have to make some adjustments to the interior of the building for handicap accessibility, so we need to make sure we have that specified as to what would be the town's responsibility and what would be the responsibility of the Historical Society/Liberianics, because, you know, if the roof needs to be replaced or shingled or something like that, that would probably fall under the town. Or HVAC system, that's maintenance by the -- probably the landlord. So I think that would cover it. Lisa, does that pretty much cover everything we talked about? Okay. That's -- Lisa's the librarian, and we had talked this through, too, so, and with Norm Peck. So more to come on that, so we're not ready to move that on. And everybody has -- and it has to be a signed lease before -- by both parties before it can be approved by the full board, so we need to get that done first. So we're making progress on it, and so we have some work to do there. But I just want to make sure we brought up to date on that. If we could go out of order here, I think we do have some people here for the Darrell Pond presentation. Would anybody mind if we skip ahead to old business under Darrell Pond and let Mr. Putnam make his presentation? Is there any problem with that? Okay. All right, Mr. Putnam. And those of us up here might want to move, because then we can see the presentation from out front.
I'm good. Come on. Actually. Dave, if you don't mind, I might get that view, and with your voice in the background.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no problem. Yeah, no problem. So, thank you for having me come and speak here. It is a piece of property that we're very interested in and have done some preliminary work moving forward. Just a little bit of background, it is a 300-acre parcel off of Masta Way Road, 200 acres of which are in a conservation easement, which is held by the Friends of Ostrogachi Hills. And there's 100 acres of non-restricted use or town use. I did bring a map that's over here on the easel over here, if you want to take a look at that. Later on, I do have a slide of that as well. The Parks and Rec Commission has appointed a subcommittee to explore the future use of this area, and we currently perform some minor maintenance duties up there as far as Park and Rec is concerned. We do cut -- there's a small field up there by the parking lot area, and we do do garbage removal on a weekly basis up there. So we are doing some minor maintenance up there. The reason we -- the commission has brought this forward to the Board of Selectmen, we're looking for some direction on the management of especially the 100-acre parcel, which is the town. And right now, by town charter, you know, we are responsible for those management areas that are assigned to us by the Board of Selectmen. So this is a piece of property that is kind of town-owned, and we're just kind of looking for some direction and some management responsibilities for that 100-acre parcel. So there's a better view of this map that's over here that I brought with me, so that you can see it outlined in the pink there. That is the -- the pink and below is the 100-acre parcel, parcel, excuse me, then the 200 acres, which is butts the pond there and then goes north and -- north of that, and you can see that area there. So it is a pretty big parcel of land. We are seeing an increased usage of that property, especially with people hiking and that kind of thing, and some nature activities. So the parking lot is there presently now holds probably eight to 10 cars at a maximum. So one of the things that I think is important moving forward and that we do this correctly, and part of that would be a master plan for that property. And part of that master plan would include a site assessment. We had an environmental review team look at that and do some soil testing and what is out there as far as native plantings, and that was done in 2013. So it would be something that needs to be looked at as far as the master plan is concerned. We have gotten some public input. We would like more. We'll get into it a little bit later on in my slides, that we've had 503 respondents to a survey that has been put out. Our thinking, and I'm going to speak for the Park and Rec Commission and for the Park and Rec Department, obviously, is that we feel this is a very passive area that should be used for passive activities. And then we would also look, if we do do enhancements up there, look at Masta Way Road. If we had increased traffic there, that is a very thin road to have two-way traffic. So potentially down the road, you know, look at making it a one-way. The parking lot definitely needs some improvements there. It is mentioned in the plan of conservation and development. It has been for a number of years. Presently, as far as our park systems are concerned, we have no parks north of 95. All of our parks are south of 95. We have nothing up the Flanders end of town. So we feel it's an important area that should be looked at, and the recreational opportunities are pretty significant. We do have the subcommittee, just wanted to, you know, mention who our subcommittees are. Todd Donovan is the chairman of that. He's presently a Park and Rec Commission member. Bruce Dassinger, who's here, he's on our committee as well. And then staff members, or Mike is here, myself, and Gary Geishill. So we've met twice, but I think we've put ourselves on hold a little bit. One was COVID, and the other is we're looking for some direction from the Board of Selectmen, whether that becomes a Park and Rec management area or not. So that's kind of where we are as far as the subcommittee is concerned. Potential activities that we talked about, and like I said, I think they need to be passive and looked at. Passively, obviously, hiking has already been established up there, bird watching. Bruce had put together a map, and I'm going to pass it around, so you guys can see that. So they put together -- it was hard to put this on a slide in a PowerPoint, so I'm going to pass this around. They designated some areas that are in purple circles. They would be appropriate for bird watching, and also those are areas that the New England Cotton Tail has been spotted. And so, you know, that is something that would certainly be taken into consideration, especially when we start doing the master planning. And that's -- I think that's really important, is that we get everybody's input. I think it's important to -- also, it's not our goal to disrupt those areas. I think those areas need to be protected, but with 100 acres, and then the other 200 acres, there's plenty of room, and I think we can work it out. So disc golf, and I have some pictures of disc golf coming up, because there's been some, I think, misconception of -- you hear golf and you think Cedar Ridge, right? Or something like that. And I'll show you some pictures of what really disc golf's about. Mountain biking, this is a picture of our, actually, Park and Rec Mountain Biking Club at Rocky Neck, and to be able to use those trails for that. There's been some talk of a dog park or not. I think that needs to be looked at, too, whether that's an appropriate location for it, and all can be done through the master planning and all that kind of discussion. The pathway pollinators, they would like an area up there, I think, as well. We talked about handicap accessible trails, kayak access, camping. There is presently a -- that Art Carlson has put together, there is a platform up there that is available for people to go camping, and then certainly educational opportunities up there are plentiful as far as species of birds, species of animals that are up there, those types of things. So this is our hiking club. This is the Park and Rec Hiking Club in the fall. That is down by the -- if you walk down a little bit, that is Darrell Pond in the background there, so we did do an organized hike there, so that, you know, just the opportunities there for us to enhance that area is pretty significant. So this is what a disc golf course kind of looks like. And so this is what -- I went out to Killingworth back in the spring. This is the Killingworth Disc Golf Course. You can see the matted area there. That is your tee box, or where they throw off from. You can see, on the picture to the far right, you can see the alleyway that is actually the fairway. So when you think about a golf course, you think about a fairway being 50 to 60 yards wide. They don't like it. They like actually going around trees and through obstacles and that kind of thing. And if you look in the middle picture, that is what the end or the green looks like, or where they throw the disc into. So when I first thought disc golf, I was thinking frisbee and throwing a frisbee and whatever. These frisbees are actually specially made, so some curve to the right, some curve to the left, some go straight. So if you see the backpack that is there that has eight to 10 discs in it that they use for different shots that they have to make and that kind of thing. So as far as disruption to the area, it is something that when we design it, or we go to design it, that it's done appropriately, that it's as least impact as possible on the area that's up there. So I think people heard, and I was getting back, people were really concerned about golf and hearing about disc golf, that they were thinking we were going to clear-cut some trees and stuff. Actually, they don't want to do that. They want to use the natural environment there, so. Another kind of -- this is, you know, the hiking opportunities up there have been great. The green trail that goes all the way up, this is the Goodwin Trail. One of the trailheads is at the Darrell Pond parking lot area, and I know Mr. Carlson worked very hard to get easements through the Yale property into the Nehtec State Forest, so that that whole trail system goes into Old Lime and up into that area. So to enhance those opportunities is really, really kind of a neat opportunity for us to do that. Like I said, we did do a survey recently. We started back -- Mike was responsible for that about six months ago.
Almost a year.
Almost a year ago, that we asked for people to respond kind of back to us in very simple Survey Monkey, 10 questions. We wanted to get a feel and a flavor for what people thought were appropriate, so we wanted to decide, you know, how many pay taxes in the town of East Lime. People that responded, it was about 65% of the people responded to the survey that lived or paid taxes in town. The age range was kind of neat to see. Obviously, that age group between 25 and 65 is kind of what we're -- kind of where the most responses were, and I think that would be the target area that we are looking for as far as activities are concerned. This was just kind of interesting, you know, when did people last visit a town park? And, you know, we'd gotten, you know, 70 -- over 70% of people have visited parks within the last three months in East Lime. So that was really cool, out of the people that had responded to the survey. And then these are the activities that kind of people wanted to see, and I think number one was hiking, and number two is a nature preserve, and I think that's so almost all in the red there. And then canoe kayak kind of launch was the third, and then some cycling and disc golf were close. So kind of, I think that's kind of where we look at, and like I said, it's -- I think it's important for me and, you know, our department and the commission, and I think also the subcommittee, that it remains a passive recreation area. And then I'm open to questions or anything as far as -- I wanted to make it short and kind of, you know, informative for you. I think it would be important to know that obviously any improvements or funding or whatever absolutely would have to come before the selectmen, before we would move on anything. I keep harping on the master plan. I think it's important that it's a 300-acre parcel of property that has an opportunity to be really beneficial for our residents, that we do it right, and that we spend the money to do a master plan. And we're going to ask for it in some -- in our ARPA request, it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood between $20,000 and $25,000 for a master plan study for that area. So again, any questions? I know Mike has worked hard on it, on this as well, and Bruce from our commission is here, and he's put a lot of work and efforts into it.
You left out Mr. Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't met Mr. Williams yet. I know he's on a -- Mr. Williams, I know Mr. Williams and Mr. Dassinger worked hard on it, and I know Mr. Williams has property adjacent to the Darrell Pond property or close to it, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Dave?
I have a question.
It's just the board right now. If you'd like to, as a member of the commission, since doing this, but let me have the board ask the questions first, and then you may ask them. Okay. Any questions?
My question was going to be about the funding, and it sounds like he's going to have to do a --
Okay. Any other?
Would it be possible later to get copies for the board members of this?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, so Mr. Dassinger put that together with Mr. Williams and with -- I can't remember her name, but she's the --
Her name is Lisa Lawrie. She's the coordinator for Green and Cotton Tails.
Right. So I can certainly have that. I can send it to Sandy in an email format, and she can send it on, yeah.
And Dave, the presentation slides, if you could pass them along as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, absolutely. Yep, we'll send that to Sandy as well, the PowerPoint.
Okay. Dave, one question. This would help, too. What would the number of acres be for a disc golf course, too? I think that would help people, too, because if, you know, because I've read some stuff about it.
Probably look at 15 to -- Yeah, 15 to 18, somewhere in that neighborhood. But remember, you're using an area that is going to be pathways and trails and bisecting, and so, you know, I would say you're probably looking at 15 to 18 for an 18-hole golf course.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Dassinger, do you have one?
Yes, I have a question. The disc golf be permitted in the easement area?
Yeah, we have -- so the easement area, the 200 acres, there is some improvements, but probably not. Bruce, probably, you know, we would look at that 100 acres to keep it on. on that. But we make sure that we do anything that it does, is covered in the easement, or that we don't violate that easement. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
You asked the question. I would be interested. With your, being permitted, can only people walk in the area that can discuss?
Absolute, without, what, 100%. So, it's, you know, the thing, you have a disc that's flying, a plastic disc, but it's not like a golf course where you'd be interrupting golfers' play. Yeah, absolutely. It's out in nature, and, yeah, actually, the people in Killingworth appreciate, it's like they've improved the trail system there by the people that are using the, using the disc golf course as well, so.
I have a question.
Yes, okay.
The board received a communication from a Linda Brigalanti, and in this communication, she stated, "In addition, the town has encroached on the conservation easement by logging a section of it and selling, perhaps selling the lumber, as observed by the logging trucks carting it away." Are you aware of that?
That's the first I'm hearing of it, Roseanne. I don't.
I have not heard about that either, Roseanne.
All right. Well, I will make sure that the communication is available to you, and I would appreciate a comment on that. This might have been.
From, because I don't have management of that property right now. I have no idea.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make sure that you get a copy of this so that you could, just so that you have it to read.
Okay.
And I.
Does she say where they're accessing it from?
Let me see. In addition, the town, the town, so it's stating, "The town has encroached on the conservation easement by logging a section of it, as observed by logging trucks carting it away."
So, she, she might be referring to the cell tower that's there?
I don't know, or perhaps.
That I would, that's my initial reaction, is the cell.
Why don't, why don't you give that to, rather than send that to Dave, send that to me for action, and I can find out a little bit more details. Because they are, they are working on the cell tower right now, because they're hoping to have it operational, fully operational shortly. So, it could be for that.
You should have this. This is number five communications.
From last week, or last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to.
Yeah, well, thank you, yeah. But I, my initial reaction would be that they probably cleared around the cell tower and were bringing the logs out. I would think that's the.
Well, and so furthermore, goes to my point, then, right now, that area is not observed very much as to what's really going on. It's a big, big piece of land.
Right, right.
And we really don't have real oversight of it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have a question. I'm just a little confused on this disc golf.
Yep.
So, how long would, like, a hole be?
Yeah, so holes about 250 to 300 yards. It's very similar, I'm going to go back to the golf course. So, you have some holes that are maybe 100 yards, another that are, so they have different pars. So, if you're familiar with golf, like you have a par three, same with disc golf, they might have something, pretty neat angle that comes down that's short or pretty long and straight. So, anywhere from, you know, 100 yards to probably 350, 400 yards for like a par four, par five.
So, how can people be, I'm just trying to think of this and envision this. You know, if you've got the golf course, how can you have people hiking? You know what I mean? Because you don't want them to get hit. You know what I mean?
Right, right. So, it might bisect, like the holes might bisect the trail, but not go through it. So, you'd have one where, and, and then you walk across the trail to your next tee box, or your next tee area, or throw, initial throw area, yeah.
And do they carry, like, the backpack with them?
They carry the backpack with them, absolutely, yeah. I was very surprised. I thought you had one, that's how silly I am. I thought you had one whammy frisbee in your throwing and it's not like that at all. It's actually, you know, they carry seven or eight discs with them, yeah.
Oh, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Have you looked at multiple golf courses or physical courses, or just that one?
I looked at that one, but I know there's one in Salem now, and nine-hole. There's one in Mohegan Park, did it in Norwich.
I just haven't seen such a fancy tee box.
And, yeah, so some of them are different, and that's probably high-end. You can also do just like, put some logs or branches down and just square it off and do it that way. That's pretty, that's pretty, that's a pretty nice, pretty nice area up there in Killingworth, yeah.
I mean, the ones I've seen before didn't have such a fancy.
Yeah, some have a cement pad, too, and there's all kinds of different options that you can use for that, yeah.
And the cost of maintenance, if you have that kind of fancy, then it's going to be more expensive.
More, absolutely.
And to maintain.
Yep, yep.
Where if it's just, if it's just wood, just trails.
Yep.
Those galvanized tee box or goalies are, there's no maintenance involved.
Right, right.
There's no maintenance.
Yep.
Neighbor's going to his front yard.
Yeah, nickel, yeah, yeah.
Is there one in operation somewhere at this golf course?
Yeah, so Killingworth is up and running. Salem's up and running. Mohegan Park in Norwich is up and running. I think there's one in East Haddon. So, there's, there's quite a few that, it's a growing sport, too. It's kind of, kind of neat. Opened my eyes a little bit when I did a tour with them. It was cool.
It's probably not operating today.
No, it's probably closed right now.
Wouldn't be surprised if there's some people out there, though, to be honest with you.
It doesn't require the hole to be in the ground, so it's a basket, so who knows?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Dave, the condition of the trails within that 100 acres, could you comment on that?
Right now, we had some runoff recently after some of the heavy rains in the early fall. But Mr. Carlson did a lot of work with the water bars there and with Public Works, and so it did prevent quite a bit of erosion from that. But the recent storm, there is, I would probably say, two months ago, three months ago, did a pretty good number on one of the trails going down. But the, most of them are trail roads and pretty wide and in pretty good shape, actually, except for that one area. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other?
And they're well-blazed, too, out there. Mr. Carlson's done a well job marking, marking the trail, so you can't get lost out there. It's really, really nice that he's done there.
It's really fascinating up there, because you can, on the Goodwin Trail, you can basically walk quite a few, up through the Airline Trail in Colchester. It's, Art has really done a magnificent job, you know, making that quite a place to hike. And one thing, too, is, you know, and obviously, we're going to, you know, this is just for discussion. We won't act on it tonight. But Parks and Rec, you know, would like to have that placed under them, because then they'll take care of the maintenance of it. Right now, and that's where you would know for sure what those logging trucks are up there for, if that's what they are. I mean, because somebody would be up there on a regular basis. And you do provide a lot of maintenance with the garbage and so forth as it is already. Now, according to the ordinances in the town charter, if it's under Parks and Rec, they're the ones that decide what to use it. And I talked with the town attorney about this yesterday, because of the sensitivity of this, we could modify the ordinance to make it that any improvement or any changes up in that area would have to be also approved by the Board of Selectmen. So, that is an option. If we wanted to possibly give it to them and consider it at a later date, that we could make it so that we would have to, you know, you know, not, you know, basically approve of what the Parks and Rec Commission wanted to move forward, so.
And I think they would welcome that. I think that would be, now you're, another layer of input from the public and make sure it's done properly. I think that's the, that's our whole, you know, my whole mission in this would be that it's well-planned out, we have a lot of public input, and that we do it in the, in a right, in the right way.
And two, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Roseanne.
I forgot to bring my list of town employees tonight. How many employees do you currently have?
Maintenance-wise?
Yes.
Four. Four full-time, and then we go to four to five seasonal maintainers.
And initially, do you think that those four people would be able to supervise this and maintain this?
Yes. I think that with the help of, similar to like the Friends of Osugachi Hills. So, I would envision that we'd have a Friends group, too, and maybe a Friends group of Darryl Pond, and they would help in some trail maintenance, some of those types of things. So, that is my, my thought. We do help out the Friends a little bit now with, if they need some big equipment or something along that, we'll help out the Friends as far as the town partnership is concerned. So, what we're presently doing is like we're mowing that area up there, continue to do that, continue to do garbage removal, and then also get into the little bit of the trail maintenance aspect of it. But it's a good question, Roseanne, but I would imagine that, I would like to see that, have a Friends group, too, that, those volunteers that are committed to that area.
I think Mr. Dassinger obviously did that this year when he paid out of his own pocket to.
Clear the mudward out.
Clear the mudward out, which is invasive species. He, once he got permission, made sure that the individual coming in was licensed and bonded and paid for it. So, he did a great service for us. So, thank you, sir.
So, when you develop your master plan, you're going to include costs or install it?
Without question, yeah.
Okay.
I wonder if you've thought about approaching the Natural Resources Commission with your alderists?
I think they would be part of that. I think we've had discussions with Art, pretty much. I think he knows where we're at as far as, as far as what we're kind of planning as well. But I certainly can reach out to them. That's not an issue, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do they meet, I don't know much about them. Do they meet?
They meet the second Wednesday of the month.
Okay.
Seven, 7:30.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, well, we'll wait to hear back from you, and we'll continue, bring this back for, at another meeting to discuss a little further and see if we want to turn the 300 acres over to Parks and Rec for maintenance and development subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Right. And just that, yeah, so the 200 is under that.
Yeah, 200 acres is the easement.
With the Friends, yeah. So, be looking more at the 100.
Would you want, would you, would you like the whole 300, or just the 100?
Just the, I think the 100 in cooperation with the Friends would be, you know, would be.
Perfect.
Would be beneficial.
Okay, that's great. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mike, for your preparation. And Bruce and Rich, thank, as committee members, thank you for attending tonight, too.
I'm going to leave that. I'll leave that here, in case if people want to take a long while, come get it tomorrow.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. And also, we have a town, our town engineer here today to, if we could still stay out of order for a bit, go to the Hazard Mitigation Plan, if that's okay with everyone to have, if you could give us your name, too, because this is our new town engineer. You've been here for about seven, oh, seven months?
Yeah, since August. So, I'm going to try to barely hear me. So, hello, everyone. Alex Close, East Lime Town Engineer. Yes, I've been the town engineer since August of 2021. So, happy to serve this community. And I would like to start, I apologize, I could not make the last meeting. So, instead, we read this plan into the record because the plan had to be read to the board before February 2nd, because that was our annual renewal of our community rating system through FEMA, and that was part of this requirement. So, I wanted to make sure that it was read at the last meeting, and I apologize, I couldn't be here to answer any questions. But I'm here this evening, and if you do have any additional questions about our plan.
If you could just give a brief overview of the, of the plan and so forth like that, the different areas and so forth.
Absolutely, absolutely, Kevin. So, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is actually, was originally conducted in, I think it's a five-year plan. I believe the first year, it was voted and approved by the board between 2017 and 2018. So, this particular plan expires in 2023. And the plan is conducted through the Southeastern Council of Governments. And then each town within the council has a particular annex, and that annex, it has to do with the particular of that town's demographic and geographic area, and what pieces apply to that town versus what applies to the county as a whole. And the reason for that being is that there's a, is a lot of stuff that applies countywide, and it takes some of the weight off of the shoulders of the individual town to come up with their own plan. And they usually have a engineering consultant on retainer there, or they contracted with Mylon and McBroom for the last one when that was done. And they help provide planning service and engineering service to develop the plan. So, you'll actually be looking in 2023 to 2024 at the approval of a new plan as we, as we, you know, approach the end of this one. And the Hazard Mitigation Plan acts as an overarching goal. There is particular concentration on flood and resiliency aspects. There are other aspects to the mitigation plan, inclement weather and so forth. But basically, the, having the plan is beneficial for a few reasons. One, it gives clear direction to our engineers and public safety officials and so forth. But the plan is actually essential to hold our rating in the community rating system through FEMA, and it's also essential to be able to qualify to get specific grantings, federal granting, state grantings. You have to have this plan in place, and when applying for funding after, you know, disasters and so forth. So, there's kind of a few reasons that we have this plan. And the update is basically, it's an update on East Lime's annex and our portion of the plan, once a year through the five years. And there's that matrix of goals and what we should be looking at. And that's just to kind of make sure that we're keeping in line in the plan, and we're kind of plugging away at our piece of it each year. As we look towards, again, 2023, we'll probably be looking at the next five-year plan cycle when Southeastern Connecticut Cog reaches back up to, reaches back out to all of their, their towns. Does that, is that clear, Kevin and the board, on the idea behind the plan? Sure. So, basically, I have prepared this update on the action items that should be covered in the year of 2021 to, sorry, 2020 to 2021. So, if you look at that matrix that you have, these are our, in the back, which is that 11-by-17 table, I believe everyone has a copy of that, you'll see that there's, there's a column that says 720, 20 to 620, 21, and it has the markings in there. And that are basically saying, you know, these are the things that should be focused on this year. And then, you know, currently, we're focusing on the 2021 to 2022 items, as well as any other items that may be carried over from the previous year. And so, that's basically what this update is. I go through the action items that are checked off under that year's total and kind of give an update to where we stand with that. And again, this had to be read in at the last meeting, because this did go forward as part of our CRS Community Rating System Program, of which we were confirmed to be recertified as a Class 8 FEMA community. And this document was a part of that recertification application package that was, that was just recently approved.
Okay. Any questions for Alex on the, on the, on the plan?
So, the questions I had were basically my standard questions about funding. Because a lot of this looks like it was.
Bill, Bill, could you, the microphone. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I'm habitual non-speaker into microphoneer. A lot of these look like they're either potential ERP funding, ERP funding, or the federal infrastructure bill. I'm not quite sure how that pays for what it pays for, but there's, you know, dams that need to be upgraded and things like that.
Sure. So, first, I'll start with the American Rescue Funds, and then we'll go a little bit more into the infrastructure funding. So, the American Rescue Funds are pretty concrete and clear in what, I shouldn't say they're very concrete and clear, right? But, but they're, the Treasury has released a final rule on what they believe to be the interpretation of appropriate use of these funds. And so, we believe out of these action items, I would say action item number 11, upgrading the stormwater collection system, is something that the Engineering Department and the Public Works Director will be submitting forward and asking for funds to help with upgrading of our stormwater system, which will help with flood resiliency, greater conveyance capacity, and ensuring our drainage is working the way it should be during inclement weather events. Some of these other items, I do not believe, these, these other items weren't considered as part of American Rescue, particularly because a lot of these items are staffing-related action items. So, some of the things about our zoning regulations or things that we have to work with the planning director on, those are just things that the town staff and then their respective commissions must deliberate and consider how to modify our regulations if, if it's determined that that's what we need to do in order to meet the, the items in this plan. The other concrete items about the dam, excuse me, and elevating the roadways. So, so for those items, those are not eligible. The American Rescue pretty clearly states that any kind of dam rehabilitation needs to be directly in conjunction with a drinking water supply source. And our dams in town are not utilized for reservoir. All of our water, as you may know, comes from an underground aquifer well system. So, we could not use this money directly to improve a dam. There are some, very few exceptions to that. But we, as the Engineering Department and Public Works have kind of ruled out the eligibility of using this for a dam, and so we didn't present it forward. Some of the other infrastructure money, I want to be candid that we're still trying to get our arms around this as much as everyone else is. We're still tracking to see how this moves through Wash. We're still tracking to see how this moves through Washington and how it's going to be distributed, and there's still a lot of unknowns at this time. I will say that environmental impacts and flood resiliency will probably be closely associated with a lot of the money that's coming out. And I would anticipate, not just with this infrastructure bill, but a lot of state and federal level funding will be geared towards flood resiliency, resisting climate change, environmental impacts and so forth. So I would definitely not rule out the eligibility of those funds for any of these projects. And we, as a department, will be keeping a close eye on the funds as it becomes more clear what funding will be available and what the eligible criteria are. So for now, we've, we're conducting some preliminary assessments of our infrastructure, but it's not clear yet whether we are able to apply any of those funds. I hope that answers your question, sir, and if you have any other questions.
No, I think the fact that you're looking into it to try to figure out answers my question, whether or not you can say yes, it is, or no, it's not yet. I understand that you might not have that answer.
Yep. Other questions for Alex?
Yes, number 12, removing the small dam that you were speaking about, is that the one that's behind Tri-Town?
Uh, yes, in the, that's, that's correct. That dam that they're talking about is the one that's across the, the way there from Tri-Town, behind those residencies. That dam is owned by the State of Connecticut. It is an action item for, I believe, is that for this year to look at that? So we will be reaching out to the State of Connecticut. We do have records of some inundation in that area. We can't draw a direct correlation that that has to do with the dam at this time. But that is an area that does get inundated during high-intensity storms. And it is actually on our, it's on our list as a department to reach out to the Department of Transportation and kind of figure out what's going on with that dam. That, that'll probably be done this year into next year, taking a look at that. But that is the correct dam, ma'am, that we're looking at.
Because that has historically been a problem, including severe flooding of the homes along Latimer Road. But also, that dam would regulate the, I think, the amount of water that flows into the little fishing park there, which is, I believe, state.
Yep, and, and there is a fish ladder on that dam, I believe, as well, that helped control some of the environmental impacts. But in regards to the, this would be quite a large undertaking. It's listed in, in this mitigation plan because it is a key item, and it is something that we are going to be looking at and reaching out to the state to discuss with. But there are a lot of factors, to your point, that would go into the discussion of this possible removal. All of the pros and cons and logistics would have to be weighed out. On one hand, it may, you know, with an appropriate study is conducted, it may reveal that removing that would alleviate some of the flooding there. But then, to your point, the environmental trade-off also needs to be assessed. So I think the first steps for our department is to solidify exactly who is responsible for the maintenance of that. You know, we know the state owns it, but we need to get an actual point of contact for that particular piece of infrastructure and begin to have that dialogue, that this is part of our mitigation plan, and this is something that we're going to be, you know, having a conversation about, but.
Well, I think that we should put it together onto some list for at least 50% state-funded, particularly as it affects the fish flow.
Yeah, so, I mean, in terms of actual maintenance operation and, and any kind of infrastructure improvements, I mean, that would not be something that the, the, the town would be looking to, you know, take on as their venture if it's, if it's not our property. Instead, it would be, uh, we would provide communication as we would with any other kind of partner and, and ensure that, you know, we're looking at what, what is the state's infrastructure there, right? Especially with Boston Post Road and 161, and, and what is the private property, what is the town's property? So all that would need to be delineated. And then, in, in terms of any kind of funding for this venture, I, I think we're too far away from, we're too far away down the road to, to start looking at who, who would fund what particularly. We need to have that first conversation about that.
And number 13 and 14, I'm curious as to why that isn't falling under Water and Sewer.
Oh, why, why it is not underwater and sewer?
Because I don't see Water and Sewer listed anyplace as having any responsibility.
Yep, so I can't speak for the people who developed this plan, because I was not involved back in 2017. My understanding is that where it lists Department of Public Works and Engineering, I think the assumption is that Public Works umbrella would also include Water and Sewer, because there are a number of items that Water and Sewer is a part of, and that Water and Sewer are looking into. While it is a separate entity here, I think that when this plan was made and voted in, I believe that was the interpretation. But again, since I was not part of crafting this document at that time, I can't confirm that. But that's how we, as a department, Public Works, Engineering, Water and Sewer, that's how we have interpreted it up to this point. So I'm kind of the spokesperson for this, because someone has to run point. And I'm also, I've taken over the title of CRS Coordinator from Victor. And so as a result, I've taken over a lot of his duties, obviously the duties of the town engineer, but the additional duties of the CRS Coordinator I've taken on as well, in this being one of them. So although I'm here to present this information for you today, anywhere that you see Public Works on here, if it's a Water and Sewer-related item, we've been handling it in conjunction with the Utilities Engineer in the Water and Sewer Department as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Alex?
Go ahead, Dan.
I just had a question about the term locally-owned roads. I mean, do they mean municipal roads or state roads or private roads?
Municipal roads specifically. Yeah. So if it's a private road or a state-owned road, that's not our particular focus.
So they're referring to municipal, municipal roads?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ann?
Yeah, fine, Alex, thanks. If I'm reading this correctly, I'm, I'm taking a look at items 18, 22, and 23 that have to do with our, the capability of our buildings to withstand wind and snow impacts. And I see that a range of, of priority, if I'm reading this correctly, some, one low, one high, one medium.
Yes.
So in my mind, I think that is a very critical issue. So could you elaborate on studies done, studies needing to be done, and why this, I guess it's just sort of perhaps a random, you know, scoring? But it seems to be pretty critical, you know, that we, that we're assured about the, about the nature of our, the buildings to withstand New England weather, let's say.
Sure. So in, in regards to the particular scoring, it is most likely not random. However, I personally do not know exactly how the scores were derived when this document was made, unfortunately. We would maybe have to go back into not only the original document, perhaps the, the minutes of the adoption process and any maybe discussions that were had then with the Board of Selectmen when it was originally adopted. I can tell you that I have reached out to our Deputy Emergency Management Director, talking about studies that may need to be conducted. And to my knowledge, no studies have been done yet, but it is something that I have discussed or heard during this renewal process. And I don't know what conversations were had with the previous town engineer, but it is something that is now on the forefront of the building, our building official, as well as the Deputy Emergency Management Director to look into. Something to keep in mind with this kind of a, a plan is, when this is done, and you get as much input as you can, and you get, you know, people that work and are experienced in this kind of field, they're putting together a, a list of things that they believe to be something that, that should be considered. And that's the, the reason the word "consider" is in there. I'm sure there are probably many towns that have this language of considering their, their, their owned facilities to, to be analyzed for these sort of things. I don't think that, I, I would not directly relate the priority of that to say that we believe that this building is, is, is in jeopardy or anything like that. That's certainly not the case. As a matter of fact, without the study, that is not, not, you're not able to, you know, tell that outside of reasonable, you know, assumptions. So I say this to say that I believe that's probably just common language that's found throughout these plans, as something that should be considered on a regular basis regardless. And it is something that I can assure you, I've had discussions with the Deputy Emergency Management and, and the, the building official to look at and consider if that needs to be done. I, I wouldn't lock that in to say that it definitely needs to be done. It should be considered, whether it needs to be done or not, and we're working on that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Alex?
Yeah, so I got, um, this chart, was it originally developed 2018 or something?
2017.
2017. Do we know that everything that was supposed to be done in the past has been done in the past?
So we'd have to look back through the, the record of each annual update and each Board of Selectmen's update. You know, there are some items on here that are pretty, you can see especially since the, the check mark is on it every year. So those are items that are routinely performed by the town as just part of their regular operations, right? Our commissions are regularly looking at their regulations, and, you know, we have, our zoning official is also our floodplain manager. So he's regularly in touch with FEMA, regularly in touch with the state NFIP Coordinator. And so these are some things that are, these things that are done routinely. Some of the yearly specific action items, I can speak for the ones in Public Works. From the conversations I've had with Joe and Ben North, these have been, and Bill Shear, these, these have been looked at. And how that was translated into a concrete document, I'd have to look at each year's previous annual report.
The reason why I ask is because number 16 was supposed to be done in 2021, and your action item list still has, has it still there? So I'm wondering how many of these other things were supposed to be done in the past and still are, haven't been.
That would be a question for the Land Use Department. We can try and find that out.
Yeah, and I mean, your overall question of how many, it would be each respective department, like you're saying. Number 16 in particular, I did reach out to Gary, the, the Director of Planning, and to his knowledge, it had not been done yet. But I brought to hi, his attention this plan and, and this particular chart, and he said that he would be looking into it this year.
Okay. Any other questions? Alex, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
That might be something that would be referred to the Historic Parkers Commission.
What was that?
That might be something that would be referred to the Historic Parkers.
Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer that to Gary tomorrow, and I'll let him reach out to them. That would not be a bad idea.
Because I know they have an inventory.
Yes, they do. So, okay, moving on. We could hold the appointments of Boards and Commissions to receive the budget books to the end, if that's okay for everybody else. And we'll just go, continue down on the, along, along the old business. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. The next one is the Special Appropriation Wage Transfers.
Does Alex need to step?
No, Alex, you're all set to go.
Nothing else?
Yeah, no, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay. Joe should have told you that part.
No, that's all right. I'm just gonna make sure, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we wanna, do we wanna do the budget books, or is she gonna, or?
Well, we're just, we're not gonna really go through them. We're just gonna hand them out, and it's, because we're gonna have to schedule meetings and that.
I understand that. I'm just saying that's what Anna's here for, right? She can also go home if we go through that part?
Well, I was, I was hoping for, you have some appropriation.
She's gonna be here for the appropriations as well, so, so by the time we're.
I'm just reading your body language as we were speaking over you for other people, and I'm like.
Sitting a long time.
Okay, is.
Are we on three?
Yes, we're on the Special Appropriation Transfer Wages.
Okay.
$40,347.74 contingency. After the budget was adopted, there were adjustments to the salaries of three employees that require transfer to the end of the fiscal year. The Police Chief, Deputy Emergency Management Director, who used to be the Administrative Assistant to the EMD. There was a lot of reasons why we wanted to bring that person up to make, it's Julie Wilson, to make her the Deputy Emergency Management Director. First of all, if the Emergency Management Director cannot attend a, a session or a training or certain meetings and that, the only person that can substitute for them is the Assistant Emergency Management Director, not the Administrative Assistant. So that was one reason. The other thing is the time Julie was putting in for comp time. And if you look at just overtime alone, which she has done over the last month and a half with all the test kits. Now, some of that would have been reimbursable for ARPA, but, you know, here again, the storm over the past weekend and so forth like that. The money that we adjusted her salary to, she would have made that in just this past month alone in overtime if she weren't in a salary position. This is where the union agreed to move it out of the union into a management position, and with, with, and not qualifying for overtime now, it has helped us out. The other was for the assessor. The assessor was brought in at a very low rate, and I know Roseanne's feeling and several of ours was that, you know, you knew what you were, you were getting paid when you got here. But all the department heads were frozen on steps, so she was really behind far. We were at risk of losing her. And, you know, the, because of an offer from another town, and we felt that the need to upgrade that salary status. Two, a big one is the chief. The chief was hired at a very low rate, and I'll hand this out, too. This is for comparison to what our chief was making prior to the contract. Okay, I'll never, this too, there one. If you'll notice here, the, the chief prior to the, the contract that he signed last fall, he's making $109,000. You can see there were deputy chiefs in three towns that were making more than he was. He was woefully behind every other chief in the area, too. And he does receive $10,000 for a stipend for his emergency management role, and you can see where the town receives. Because he's the EMD, we do get a combination of both his state, I mean, his EMD and police chief salary. So, and I think we can all agree that what the chief has done in getting that new police station up and running, and he's at everything. The other night at the fire, he's the one. He was the spokesman on the TV for a couple of stations, probably did much better than I did. And, you know, he's just a really good asset, so we wanted to be sure he was here, so we brought him up to what we felt was an appropriate level of funding. And as you can see on the second page, it specifies where the funds are coming from for the salary upgrade. The assessor? Okay, and then the Deputy EMD and the Police Chief, it was brought up to that wage. And it shows the source of funds. There was not enough in the payroll contingency. You can see what was left in the payroll contingency, so we had to take the rest out of contingency. So what, you know, any questions regarding these adjustments and that? I mean, I think we have, there's no question, especially, and, and you both saw what Julie did for the, at the, the test kit handout that day. That's Julie. All weekend, she was the one providing the updates for the, on the storm and so forth and researching. And I mean, you know, sometimes at like 11 or 12 o'clock at night, I'll get an update from her from an incoming storm. She's constantly, you know, going above and beyond, so I'm very comfortable with this. So any questions regarding this?
I just, quick question.
Yes.
So the chief, was you seeing basically $109,000 and you want to bump it up to $135,000?
Well, he, he is right now, because that's what the contract he signed. Mark signed the contract with him last August. Yeah, so, I mean, we have to move the money, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, understood where it was coming from and why it was done. I mean.
Okay, that's what, that's, yeah, that's what I read, but then the way you explained it.
Yeah, I just, I just figured, since, since the three of you weren't involved in the conversation last year, you were aware, but. conversation last year, you were aware of it too, so, anyway, so, okay. Any questions? Anna, is that well described?
It is.
Okay. Thanks, Anna. Okay.
Okay, so, move to appropriate and transfer forty thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents as follows. Twenty-nine thousand, five seventy from account zero-one dash zero-one dash one-twenty dash one-hundred dash five hundred, parentheses payroll contingency, and ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents from account zero-one, zero-one, one-twenty, two-hundred, five-hundred, parentheses contingency, to the following accounts. Eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to account zero-one, zero-one, one-oh-two, one-hundred, two-eleven, parentheses assessor. Four thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-three cents to zero-one, twenty-five, dash, two-fourteen, dash, one-hundred, dash, three-eleven, parentheses deputy emergency management director, and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents to account zero-one, dash, twenty-five, dash, two-sixteen, dash, one-hundred, dash, two-eleven, parentheses police chief, and forward to the board of finance for approval.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, there's a second. All those in favor, the most signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously, and thank you. Okay, moving on to item three C. We have a draft pension board establishment. This would be an ordinance. And there's been a, I also shared a copy of this with Denise Hall, who's on the finance board and also a member of the pension board. So, you'll see it here, if there's no, Denise has a comment, but I'll let everybody else comment on it. And you can see what, the second part of it there, the one where it says Eden Towne of Eastside Charter, Chapter Four, that was a rough that Denise Hall submitted. She thought that, and here again, it was an ordinance, so that's why it was done. This has been reviewed by town attorney and so forth like that. It does require a, if we're happy with this and don't want to make any changes to it, it would get published in a day, and at our second meet, our first meeting in March is when we would have a public hearing on this beforehand, if anyone wishes to speak, speak to it after that. If there's no one speaks to it or objects to it, it would be adopted, and then ten days later, it would become effective, unless somebody submitted a petition to take it to recrimendum, which I doubt, because the pension board, as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, was established back in, Anna, two thousand eight, or nine, or something like that?
I think that time.
Paul, for me, to make sure our pension funds were well managed, which they have been, they've grown from seven to thirty-plus million, and were funded at over a hundred percent. But we really need to have a formal, this really needs to be a formal board of commission, so, you know, Denise thought that way, and it was a good point that, because there's some powers and duties that they take care and so forth, so I think that specifies it pretty much. Any comments?
I think it's a good idea, because after all, they're investing people's money or managing employees' pension funds.
Okay, okay. Anna?
Yeah, I just was inquiring as to Denise Hall is on the board of finance and also on the pension committee, is that appropriate? Is that allowed?
It would be, because this pension board reports to the, and we're gonna get into something else here in a minute, which she and I talked about today. She, it's a board of selectmen that have the oversight of this. She would not, as a member of the board of finance, have oversight of that. They'd be, get a report, but they don't, here again, if you'll notice, it makes all the references in this are to the board of selectmen. So, no, she wouldn't, because Beth Hogan, when she was on board of finance, was a member of this, actually, she still is a member, she stayed on after she left, so I don't think that's a problem at all. Yeah. Any other comments?
I just, oh, no, great.
So, if I may, since the pension committee has been established, there's always been a board of finance member to the committees, you know, just for history.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan?
The, on the required reporting at the end of the proposed regulation, it says that they will do a financial condition, including at least every three years, an actuarial valuation of assets.
Yep.
I looked at the National Association of State Retirement Administrators, they recommend evaluation being done every year, but they said most boards do it every five years. That seems to be the most common, you know, frequency. My concern is that with three years, you could actually have a sitting board of selectmen that never gets to receive that information.
Yeah, so, we do an evaluation every year. The language says at least every three years. We do, the town has consistently some evaluation each and every year. And that's, by having evaluation done, that's what establishes the basis for what the town's annual required contribution is.
So, a sitting board of selectmen would have input from the pension board every year, essentially?
And in the report, it does say that every year they would be...
Yeah, then there, here it says, the pension board shall submit annually to the board of selectmen and so forth, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you could change that language to say at least every other year, and that way then it would cover...
That's what I was thinking, every two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we can make that, we'll make that change.
But if they're doing it annually now anyway, then why wouldn't it just be annual?
Yeah, that's a good point. If it's every third year, but we're doing it every year anyway, just leave it as annually, because we know we're gonna get the report from the committee.
So, like what we're doing.
Is that okay?
I think, yeah, and it seems like there are two different...
Yeah, because it says...
An actuarial valuation.
One is an, the first one, the first report under number one is the schedule of its estimated expenses and its estimate of the liability of the town. So that's a yearly report. The second one has to do with the financial condition of the plan, and then in addition, it sounds like, well, including in that is this other actuarial valuation of assets and liability. So it seems like we're two different reportings.
I've been at several, chaired several of the meetings and so forth like that, and Mark's options, and I don't think it would be that hard to do the, I mean, the pension committee does the review, I don't think it would be that difficult. Do you, Anna?
In terms of...
Doing everything annually?
Even if they just did it every...
Well, evaluations, the language, so the language that's included in the proposed ordinance is stating that at least every three years, we'll have an actual evaluation, setting like a minimum, but we do it more frequently. We have been practicing doing it on an annual basis.
Yeah, so, so I was saying, at least, say, at least every other year, and that way it covers it, then at least the board of selectmen is the sitting board, as Anna says.
Okay.
So, instead of three, just put two there?
Yeah.
Yeah, every two years, exactly. That sounds good. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Anna?
On the paragraph above that, I'm just gonna read it, says no publicly owned corporation, insurance company, or bank shall be disqualified, providing a trustee, agent, custodian, or co-pository, or for participating in the funding of the pension fund pursuant to section, solely because one or more members of the pension board may be an employee, officer, director, or minority stockholder of such corporation, insurance company, or bank. I don't know, that's kind of raised some red flags for me, and I just didn't know if that was appropriate, if, if they're part of, you know, these other corporations, insurance companies, or banks.
We could, we could possibly, I think we could possibly go back to the town attorney and ask for, you know, I understand your concern here, too, somebody could have some tie into, you know, so.
So, so current, so, a little bit of history on the plan. So, the plan was originally a guaranteed insurance contract through the Hartford Insurance Company.
Okay.
Okay, so then, the Hartford Insurance Company sold its contract to Mass Mutual, who then sold its contract to Empower Retirement. So, I think that's more or less the basis of why the language is worded that way. So, last fall, the pension committee did an RFP for new asset managers to the plan, and so what we'll be doing is, instead of using Empower Retirement, we will be moving the plan assets to be with a custodial bank, which is US Bank. So, so I think, like, that's kind of like why the language is worded the way it is, because it gives a broad perspective on where we may place our assets, because like, they were always held by the Hartford, which is an insurance company, so I think that's where that language comes from.
And it seems too, and I'm thinking about it, a lot of, you know, banks bite each other out in their spot out, and they continue changing hands, because that was loans a lot, too.
Oh, yeah, with mortgages, yes, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, I can see that, too, where somebody could all of a sudden be, you know, I, okay, that makes sense. Good explanation, Anna. Any other comments? I'll share Denise's, there's one, too, and it has been, so what I'd like to do is add number three, at the end of number three on page one, composition in terms, I'd like to add a sentence that the finance director and human resources director shall be non-voting ex officio members of the pension board. Anna has always been there, and now with Tracy Santos is our HR director, she knows what's coming down the pipe for retirements and that, and obviously would have, I think, some valid input to this, so make the change to the finance director and human resource director shall be non-voting ex officio members of the pension board.
Where was that?
On the first page, under composition in terms, number three.
Composition in terms, open this.
I talked about the, one of the residents shall be, you know, add a sentence to the end of that. Everyone okay with that? And Sandy, you have the language for that?
I do.
Wonderful. And there was one other thing that Denise mentioned. She thought, and this goes along with what Anna brought up before, remove the first selectman as a member of the pension committee. It has been since the beginning, but of the pension board, it has been since the beginning, and a voting member, and has also served as chair. But her feeling is, since it's reporting to the board of selectmen, not the board of finance, that it would probably be better to remove the first selectman as a voting member, because basically, you get two votes at the same type of, and if I remember correctly, too, a few years ago, when we took the first selectman off the, as a voting member of the police commission, it was because, you know, gets two votes on a similar matter. So, I think we could add, I have no problem with that.
So then, would you want to move the first selectman down to section three as a non-voting ex officio?
No, well, we could add that the first selectman, finance director, and, yeah, I meant that, good point, Bill.
Would be ex officio.
Correct it that way, yes.
The first, the first selectman, finance director, and human resources director shall be non-voting ex officio members of the pension board.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good point.
And then, the management administration board shall consist of, of five electors of, paragraph one under composition in terms, which will consist of five resident electors of the town, remove the first selectman.
So five is enough? You don't have to replace the first selectman with somebody else?
Uh, I think five people is, is fine. I think that's good. Because here again, the votes have always been pretty common, I mean, to sit down and listen to some of these, when they talk financing, it is just impressive to hear them talk. I mean, it's really, really very good, you know, and, and how well they've managed our funds, and, you know, and, you know, they've, they backed off a little bit, because they had been expecting, okay, we're seven percent, okay, with things as they were, they said, let's back that off a little bit. They, it's just a really impressive group of individuals.
Okay, so if there's five people, three, two, before, it was gonna be three, three, which is a non-decision, so it really doesn't make it any easier to make a decision. Okay.
No, I think this will work out fine. And you still need three people for quorum, I mean, because, actually, you need four before nine, you just need three, so. Okay, is everyone comfortable with those changes? Well, those, and we'll send out, once Sandy gets it put together, we'll send it out, and then we'll have it out, and take the necessary steps to get it published. And we're supposed to have to publish the whole thing in the, in the paper, which would be, but there's a way that we can say how it's available in a bunch of different locations and that stuff.
That's what I was gonna ask, can you publish it later?
Yeah, it saves us a lot of money. Okay, so we're all set there. Moving on, the pump-out vote, this was brought up, you know, Camille brought this up, Alberti brought this back up, that, you know, we had basically used federal funds to pay for something that was already being, the purchase was being supplemented by federal funds, which you cannot do. So, the money, we're gonna, we've, well, Anna, I'll let you talk to this, since you're the one that, you know, was taking it from Town My Project, so.
So, we're just identifying, we're identifying another source of funds to make this contribution. We have within our CNRE fund, an account designated for town projects, and that's, you know, where we're taking the source of funds.
Yeah. Waterford was in the same position we are, so we're all set there, so if there's, no other questions, just need to move that ahead?
Yeah. Move to approve, move to appropriate and transfer twelve thousand, five hundred dollars from CNRE Fund Thirty-Two, account thirty-seven, dash, seventy, dash, three hundred, dash, five hundred, dash, nine-nine-nine, parentheses townwide projects, to an account to be established titled, in quotes, pump-out vote, and forward to the board of finance for approval. A town meeting will be scheduled at a later date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. And the next action, you'll like, because you get to put a little bit of more money back into the ARP fund, and that's to, you know, reallocate the money. I did talk, the town attorney made a ruling on this, they said putting money back into it does not require a town meeting or, or to go through the board of finance, because we're not appropriating things, we're giving them money, so they should be happy, so.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Move to reallocate the twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for the pump-out vote, approved at the ten-six, twenty-twenty-one town meeting, back to the pool of funds for the American Rescue Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it carries unanimously.
Okay.
Okay, update from American Rescue Ad-Hoc Committee.
Yeah, well, we are very much up and running, is the ARP ad hoc subcommittee. We have had two meetings, and we've been able to decide on an application form, which is now up on the town website with plenty of information, deadlines, and this is, this application form is directed to nonprofits and small businesses, to organizations. As you know, there will also be a number of requests from town departments, which will also be considered. So, we are, you know, as I said, moving ahead, we basically have been meeting, and will continue to meet on Thursdays at five o'clock, either in this room or in the other conference room. And we've also taken care of some of the applications that have come in, sort of in-between administrations, where old board, former board, and the new board have not acted on. So those folks have been informed that if they're a small business or a nonprofit, that the application is a requirement. It's a very streamlined application, it's not difficult, you can, you can mail in your, or drop off your information as well, but you can also, you know, basically email, which makes it quite... But you can also, you know, basically email, which makes it quite easy. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. There will be many requests, and both within the community and, I believe, you know, on-town side. And we have a finite pot, so we will forge ahead and try to make a good recommendation. And again, we will, our deliverable, so to speak, is a recommendation. It is not some sort of vote that is, you know, written in stone. It is a recommendation. So we're acting as a, you know, a kind of, as a subgroup of the Board of Selectmen to gather information, cycle through it, make some recommended decisions along the way. It's definitely a process, and, you know, basically a bit of a revised process from the previous process, so.
Ann?
Yeah, the only thing I would add was that the applications are due either by email or by regular mail by February 21st, 2022.
22nd, because the 21st is a holiday.
Yeah, we just, yeah.
It's 21st is a holiday. We realize that after, yeah. I think Sandy, Sandy knows that, she said.
It's President's Day.
It's President's Day, so.
Yeah, so it would be hard to.
Yeah, we'd hate to have somebody.
We're not open, so that's fine.
So, and I told you, Joe Berga will be coming to you this week with the water and sewer and Public Works request.
Yes, he, Joe will be the first presenter, so to speak, to us tomorrow evening. So that should be very helpful, I think, get us going in that direction.
So, and if I could also, too, speak to Mr. Schultz. I did email him back saying we appreciated his concern when he, he had sent me an email a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, we do take into consideration, you know, all the town projects and so forth like that. But we, I think, way back in the fall, back in August, we had talked about wanting to empower a committee to provide recommendations, which they are. And I pointed out to him that they are, you know, the Board of Selectmen is still the determining factor, you know, the recommendations are just that, so. And, you know, and I wish Mike could stay, but, because, so he can answer that. But, and I always, Mike emails me a lot, and it, I appreciate it, and I love hearing from Mike, so keep it up.
One last point, the process, the appropriation process stays the same. You know, it's still Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Town Meeting. So there's no, there's no change in that. So that's, that's really important.
Okay, pandemic, just really brief this time. First of all, we had a kit give out, and thanks to both Ann's for showing up and helping us out that day. That was a great, a great event. We had a lot of people getting, not, wasn't lined up like we thought, but we had a good steady flow, so thank you. And as you can see, the numbers are coming down. We're a little under 8%, and hospitalizations have dropped over 1,000, which is, that's the real good news. So that's the only thing there. So move back up, we have a couple of appointments to Boards and Commissions.
All right, so we will begin.
Okay.
First appointment, motion. Move to appoint Tony Buglioni, 55 Society Road, Niantic, as a member on the Board of Police Commissioners for the Town of Eastlime, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. That was a reappointment, because Tony's been serving on it for a bit. Okay, go ahead.
Move to appoint Marjorie Meekeoff, 6 Cedar Ridge Road, Eastlime, as an alternate member on the Conservation of Natural Resources Commission for the Town of Eastlime, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Has been second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. We have a couple more.
Move to appoint Richard McDonald, 23 Hopkins Drive, Niantic, as a member of the Brookside Farm Museum Commission for the Town of Eastlime, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Second?
Second.
Second by, Bill? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously.
Okay. Last one. Move to appoint Kathy Wilson, Director of the Eastlime Senior Center, as the Municipal Agent for the Elderly for the Town of Eastlime, with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024.
Second? Second by Roseanne. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Now comes basically what will be consuming us for the next month or so. And I think send in Ann, Ann would, Anna would agree that it's consumed us for the last couple of weeks here. We spent a lot of time meeting with department heads, checking every possible source of revenue. And I have to give Anna credit, just to sit down and the thoroughness of how she comes up with the, when we get to the revenues, we'll talk about that, you know, just, she goes back extensively over the years past, and, okay, it's been really high for the last few years, but this year, this is where we are, so. And she's being conservative in her, in determining revenues, which I'd rather do, rather than, you know, come up with something that turns out to be the case. But as you can see by my cover letter, you know, as we review the budget, in part, we're still dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, and it had an impact in the development of the budget. Cost for services has shown a significant increase over the last year. And because Joe Berga was able to lock in on that minor Black Friday several months ago, our increase in fuel costs is only going up $73,700 for next year, which is a 46.65% increase. And also, all four union contracts are expiring on June 30th of this year. The general wage increase in all of the expiring contracts for, that will be expiring this year for this current year is 2.25%. We're not going to see that, because with inflation's up over 6%, I think it's anticipated we'll have a noticeable increase in the GWI. Two of the unions have agreed to a one-year extension, which will shorten the, and I'll talk, I'll talk about that later, but the need to have all contracts coming up at once, and probably a little easier hit on the accounts. And as you've noticed here, the next sentence, this accounts for a significant increase in the town's contingency, increase in the contingency account of 184%. Because all the dollars that we possibly might have to give out, and this is where she's not conservative. She'll want to make sure we have the resources there, because with binding arbitration, that we want to be sure the resources are there if we have to pay it out. And here again, we will not know the actual pay raises for the unions until after the budget is presented to the town. If, with the two unions were going ahead for just a year, we're able to notice some savings, you know, that will be reflected in that. But one of the unions is the dispatcher union, which is six people. So even if we got them to stay at 2.25, which I'm sure they would not, that wouldn't be that much. And here again, town needs to respond to an increasing number of requests for services from our, for our residents and, from our residents and taxpayers. Parks and Rec, Senior Center, Police Department, Fire Departments, Planning Building Zoning Office, and various other town hall offices are seeing increase in requests for services and assistance. And we have to be sure we provide the resources for those, because we, you know, hear about people, they'll apply for a permit, they have 30 days to get it back, it's coming right down to the wire. And we've made some progress over the last 20 years, and I think people appreciate the value of services delivered in town. They live here for a reason. We've had some, we take that into consideration. We consider the town's ability to pay when we deliver the budget, or develop the budget. And as I say, Ann and Johnson, I met with the department heads, the various agents and commissioners regarding their budget submissions. If there was an increase requested, we wanted documented justification, we got that. There were several departments that had good justification, and we didn't give them increases, our personnel increases. We may have given them some more part-time hours, but we didn't give them the, an additional position that they asked for. As I says, the town's largest investment are the employees who work for our town and provide the services we value. Most of the budget goes for labor and the benefits that are provided to our workforce, and we have to continuously invest in maintaining our buildings and replacing equipment that has outlived its useful use. We ordered a garbage truck last year, because it was approved. We still haven't gotten it yet, so we're feeling the strains of the supply chain as well. The fire truck that was approved last year, we probably won't see that for another several months. So we must continually invest in our, in materials, equipment, roads maintenance, and other sources, but we also have to do that, you know, scrutinizing every detail and measuring every item's value, so we keep doing that. Some of the major increases, Human Resources, as you can see, if you look at your budget page, which is really about the first page in the book, you'll see Human Resources is up 98%. This, we made the Human Resources position a director out of necessity, and she continually, Tracy continually identified several areas where the town was deficient in HR. She's filling out forms that are required every year that have never been filled out. And this is an ongoing thing, and she's asked for, she asked for a full-time assistant. We are going to plan on giving her one at 15 hours a week to help her with the filing. We anticipate some retirement, and in the past week, we had, as I talked, you know, as everyone knows, Dan Main, our worker that was at the transfer station, passed away. So that obviously suddenly occupies a great deal of her time, because you're offering whatever needs you, that you can to family and stuff like that. So there's a real need in that area. The Police Department, Eastlime, we were fourth from bottom, we did get better. We're fifth from the bottom in the number of officers per 1,000 citizens. And they'll make a, Police Commission will make a presentation when we have, when they come in for the budget. But I think we have an obligation to meet the minimum requirements for those who work at the PD and for our citizens. And last year, for the calendar year, we saw an increase in the number of criminal cases, and definitely an increase in requests for services in the 2021 calendar year. So there's a need for it, too, as, you know, as we saw tonight during our tour. We have a really nice facility now, and, you know, a sense of pride, and we need to provide them with the tools. Next one, information technology. This is a department where the town has been lacking. Eastlime has one IT coordinator and a volunteer assistant dedicated to IT. And Mike does a great job. I mean, he's fantastic. He's the one that gets a lot of things on the website sometimes, and he's a volunteer. And we still contract with Stark Computers for additional support, but if this director position comes in, there would be a reduction in how much we spend on Stark for their support, and slowly back that off. As you can see tonight, is talking to the police chief when we were having the tour of the Public Safety Building, and we see the need here all the time. There's an increased dependency on things supported by IT at all levels. And it's, we deemed it essential to have an IT director to oversee the system. Right now, Joe Berga has tried to oversee it, but he doesn't have the time, and he's not expected to have the technical expertise to serve as that director. I think we need someone in that position, especially, we're talking about, you know, just what we saw tonight, so many things talking, everything else, too. And here again, in conclusion, we're very fortunate to have the dedicated department heads and employees at all levels who routinely provide the outstanding service to the community. Their dedication is the reason residents can maintain, remain confident that the town will always have a safe and enjoyable place in which to live. And this is going to be our biggest challenge over the next couple of months, to make sure we still provide the level of service to the community, still main, while recognizing there's only so much we can ask for. The current budget, as you can see on this, and like I said, tonight is not, you're not expected to, you're going to take this home and digest it like I had, no. My wife said I was talking about money in my sleep one night, so I'm, about a vacation or something like that, not just, but you can see where we stand. Total town only is up about 2.57%. General government about 5.35. Government, I mean, debt service is down 0.82%, and capital is up about 5.29%. Board of Ed is up 4.59%, which, and so the total town and budget is up about 4.37%. And the book is very detailed in what we're moving forward with. Anna, I think my cuts to this were right in the vicinity of a little over $300,000 from what was submitted by department heads? Okay, probably a little bit more than that. I removed about $300,000 plus dollars out of what was requested. So this is just the budget, take it home, spend some time going over it, and what we'll be doing is scheduling some meetings. Any, and here again, Anna did a nice job in the, this handout right here, she, talking about building department, human resources, IT, maintenance of town buildings, general government service, contingency management. She really gets a little more detailed in the fire departments and that, and that. The grand list, we will have when, Anna?
So we're looking to get it completed by this month.
Okay. And that will have an impact, too, on what might be increased, too. And here again, too, you know, we're still going to still look for efficiencies and savings, too. Sometimes we get better news from the state. Right now, we budgeted 8% for healthcare increase over last year. Sometimes we get good news with that, and it comes down a little bit to save us some money, so.
What did you say was the increase of Board of Ed? Okay, I see.
How does the revaluations of the property affect the budget, or does it not?
The reva, oh, go ahead, Anna.
I couldn't hear what she asked.
How does the revale affect the budget?
So it's going to ask, so it'll be, you can kind of get a little bit of a shift of, you know, how everybody's assessed values are, and so.
Yeah, I mean, you can't like.
My own house went up, so I'm thinking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but here again, but the, but the mill rate usually is, usually whenever there's a revale and there's an increase in assessed value of your house, there's a, which means there's a higher tax rate, the mill rate does not stay the same. It'll probably drop, because now the value of a mill will be more, so it'll probably reduce. And it's hard to tell what that'll be at this point in time until we go through the review, the process and that. I think Denise Hall did a good explanation at her Board of Finance meeting, said, you know, don't take the appraisal and assessment and say, wow, my taxes are going to go up 45%. That's not necessarily our 30% or whatever the increase was in your assessed value. That'll take into consideration when we know the entire grand list and so forth like that, and what we need to run the, run the town. And once a budget is adopted, the mill rate is adjusted to meet that goal, so. It's hard to say, but normally the mill rate comes, Bill, you've been through this before. The mill rate usually comes down. Bill, why don't you talk to?
I was just waiting for you to be done. In theory, if everything was the same, if the budget didn't go up, if the state aid didn't go down, if everything funding-wise stayed the same, as the property value increased, the mill rate would decrease, so that you needed $10 million before, you still need $10 million. So if the property value goes up 10%, the mill rate goes down 10%, and your tax bill stays unchanged. It's not that simple, because the state doesn't always pay the same, corporate, I mean, business, other assets, non-residential, so the grand list changes. There's a bunch of other variables, but, and either nod your head up and down or back and forth, right?
Oh, no, I'm with you.
Right, so, so, so there's a bunch of other variables, but if you just look at the property value, it should be, the mill rate goes the opposite as the property value, and it should be equal. Doesn't work that way, because the state adds more, the state takes away more, businesses grow, businesses decrease, all those other revenue sources change. But in a simple world, and the budget goes up, so you end up kind of reacting to that. And with this four and a half percent raise, it, it's not going to be a wash.
No, it would not be at that. And here again, this is, here again, this is my budget. And here again, this is, here again, the, this is my budget to, you know, to the board. And obviously, we anticipate adjustments to this as well, you know.
Did you wanna set some?
What I wanna do is set some, uh, some meeting dates to, to go through this and talk about, normally, uh, you know, for instance, I, I don't see the need to call the town clerk in. Their, their budget goes up, I mean, there's not a whole lot to review there. Same thing with possibly, uh, you know, the tax collector, registrars, that's all pretty, uh, or historic properties and stuff like that. Those are just the same as they were year to year and that unless you wanna see them. But we normally will, definitely public works. The Lisa Timothy likes to come in from the library, so we usually schedule, uh, her. Parks and Rec definitely, the fire department, public safety. Planning will do this year because there's a little bit more of an increase in planning. So I have, I'd like to do planning, uh, which would also be inland wetlands and natural resources. That's all Gary. So, uh, planning department and, uh, add building, those two, because those are two that we don't normally hear from, but because of the increases, I'd like to have them come in this year. So I have down, uh, public works, which we consider and take an exception. Public work, engineering, I T and building maintenance, police. And I thought this would be possibly, we could probably do this over, uh, three meetings. Public works would come for one, which, that's a long presentation. And we could probably, would be a good one to add building to as well because we're talking building maintenance and we could probably have public works and the building department come in on the same night.
Are you saying town building? No, you're not saying town building committee?
No, no, the building department.
Okay.
Building department. No, town building, that, uh, town building committee is basically what it is every year. So for one of the nights, I'd like to do public works and the building department.
Wanna do that the first night?
Yeah, the first night. And what night is, what state is good for everyone? Next Wednesday does, I was, we could schedule a special meeting, but next Wednesday doesn't work because that's finance. We could start, uh, our next meeting in two weeks, but we, we need to have a meeting before that, I would think.
I think we should have a special meeting.
We could, uh.
This is, when we have our regular business and some of these detailed budgets, it's too much.
No, I agree. So let's take a look, uh.
So do we wanna, as far as what you're saying, who you wanna see and who we don't wanna see? Do we wanna look at all these budgets and just kind of say, okay, anything greater than two hundred and fifty thousand we wanna see or anything with a growth greater than four percent we wanna see? Do we wanna do some kind of criteria like that as opposed to just saying, maybe because you've gone through them all?
No, I, I think.
You know what the challenges are, but.
I, I think all the ones we're, we're talking about which would encompass all those large increases. For instance, like, like if there's a four hundred percent increase, there could be a four hundred percent increase that winds up being like a nine hundred dollar increase.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, if the proposed budget is greater than two hundred and fifty thousand and the growth is greater than four percent, then I would think we definitely wanna see them. So what you're saying, some small little budget that's two hundred dollars, a two hundred percent increase is four hundred dollars.
Well, for instance, bu, building is up forty-three thousand dollars. And I think that, because we're, we're giving some more hours to, uh, support staff and, and some more money for, um, for, uh, which would be built, uh, number, uh, on the, on the, uh, budget page, number one oh four. That's up eighteen percent, so, and it's not two hundred and fifty thousand, but it's forty-three thousand dollars. And, you know, he had asked for, in addition to that, he asked for a full-time, another full-time building inspector. That didn't get support, I didn't support that, so we're looking at that. Human resources is up, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars, but that's almost a hundred percent increase. I think Tracy needs to come in to talk to that, so, um.
So, yeah, you just hit the first two that I, that would, Mike burning through this was those two were the first two that stuck out.
I T would be, I T.
The next one that stuck out.
I T comes under public works because right now public, because that's technically under Joe Burgah right now.
Good. Registers, it's a small enough budget, I guess they can kind of just winch. Fourteen and a half percent is kind of significant.
Registrars, that's because of, uh, because of the anticipated, uh, state election year for primaries and, uh, in the, uh, in the August timeframe, which is why it's a little increased. Miscellaneous, maintenance of town.
Town buildings?
That's gonna be considered with public works.
Okay.
Okay?
And then I think I'm good until we get to finance department.
Yeah, finance department you'll hear, contingency you'll hear. Moving down, emergency management, the chief will, that'll be under with the police department. And all public safety will, emergency management, all the public safety, public works. Commission on, commission on aging, we don't have to do that, but I, I think Kathy wants to come and talk about some of the challenges she, she's coming up, so I'd like to schedule her.
And let's remember that some of these commissions, this is the only time that they come forward to talk about what they see as their future needs as well.
Yeah.
So you said all the public safety groups?
Uh, yeah, that, that's all one, that's basically the chief anyway for the most part. And, and I would also include the fire departments as, as what, they're all, I think they all need to come.
Of course, Board of Education.
Board of Education, which we'll have to schedule for a separate night too.
That's a real night.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure. And here again, we, we can only make off recommendations to them. We have no ability to say that's too much. Parks and Rec, uh, Dave's only up thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six, but I think, but he's got culture and recreation as well. So I think he'd be a good one to have come.
The other nice thing about bringing someone like him in there is that he may be able to talk about some cost-cutting things that he's doing and then we can take that and apply that across all the departments.
Yeah, well, well.
We just got rid of our printers and got these other printers or something.
Well, actually, no, printers are, we, we're getting a new printing, yeah, that's under I T.
Not, not a real example, just an example.
Yeah.
We had conversations one year about phone service.
Anna, we know how printers have been such a touchy subject over the, Bill, that was kind of inside joke. That's been a touchy subject for a reason over the last few months. So, but anyway, I, pretty much everything I, I mentioned would be covered by that. And I thought, uh, have public works and building for one night, which would take all the public works, engineering, I T and building maintenance, police and public, pretty much public safety tonight, police, fire departments, emergency management and then the fire marshal. And then another night we could do, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, com, uh, Committee on Aging, library, and there was one other we wanted to do. Oh, and then another night for the Board of Ed. So I'll take a look at the calendar.
So you need four meetings?
Yeah.
And then one to deliberate.
I think a couple of these heavy-duty ones we could do in one night, special meeting.
Okay, how does, um?
And a lot of that goes into our preparation if we really read the book and then read the amendments behind it, whatever you call that second section.
Yeah, the, the.
The narrative.
It seems like a lot of times people ask questions and it's like, it's like you're the narrative.
You know, the thing is too is, um, I, I can, if you have, um, reach out to the department too, so if you have a question, you know, they may have some chance to, to, to check into it. One problem I know, we're, and one of the things that we'll be talking about is we're having a significant retention and recruitment problem now because our, especially at the entry level, we're lacking wages, uh, with what we pay. Because if you look at Parks and Rec, we hired somebody this week, uh, the new, uh, you know, it was halfway through the year, that, that point five position, which means you hire the person halfway through the year. And there's a fellow who's been here for three years. They are both making the same because you stay on step, you just get G W I. So I'm here for three years and you get hired and you're making the same thing I do. That's really not the way it's supposed to be. We're losing people to surrounding towns because there's, you know, they're making fifteen to twenty percent more by going to surrounding towns for, you know, similar positions, yeah.
Well, perhaps it's time to reconsider, uh, reinstating step, reinstituting steps.
It's being done. That's why there's some money in contingency this year. And, and, you know, here again, uh, we, we, and, and the unions are, realize we can't fix it overnight, but we need to start addressing it because, you know, we were shorthanded in the storm because we have lost a couple of people. And it, it made it a little bit, I mean, our guys did a great job too. But anyway, looking for dates, uh, how about, uh?
Well, on some of these lesser commissions, it's no big deal if we miss the ex officio.
Oh, no, I, I'm thinking the same thing. Not, not during budget season, it's fine too. How about, uh, next Tuesday, the eighth?
What time?
We could do, uh, seven, you wanna do seven o'clock? And, uh, I'll have public works and building come in for that, for that night?
Joe's not gonna be here.
Joe's away, so we won't do Joe next week. Uh, we'll have, uh, polite, thank, I'm glad you brought that up.
How about all the emergency management?
No, that'd be good. Let's do the emergency management on the eighth. And here again, we can get this room because.
We gonna include the police with that?
Oh, yeah, police, fire departments, emergency management and fire marshal. All, all the, uh, public safety come in on the eighth.
Can you keep that police, fire?
Emergency management and fire marshal.
Seven, seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, planning may still be doing Zoom meetings. I think they have their room on Tuesday, that seven o'clock.
Uh, they get moved for us.
They had Zoom meeting last time, so they might, no, after.
So that would be the eighth?
What do you wanna do, Board of Education?
I have to check with Jeff for that. I, I don't wanna set him a night for that because they may not be here. I won't, we won't do Valentine's Day because we're gonna.
Do you know if they've had their public hearing yet on the budget?
I do not know.
Maybe if.
I think they've adopted their budget, so if they've adopted their budget, they've had the public hearing.
Maybe if we, uh.
Huh?
I was gonna say, maybe if we attended the public hearing, we could save ourselves.
No, I think we wanna.
You can watch, you can always watch.
Yeah. No, I, I think they've adopted their budget, so. How about the, uh, it'd be a busy, but how about the, uh, Tuesday, the fifteenth for public works? And, uh, which would be public works, engineering, I T and building maintenance. All the things that would, Joe Burgah, I under, because technically he's still I T.
I have an ex officio that needs, I, it's already, we don't.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the selfish commission?
No, you can miss that one. Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, and what one, I'm sorry.
Okay, public works, public works, which encompasses engineering, I T, public work, engineering, information technology and building maintenance and building department as well for that night.
Just contact the chair and say that you.
Yeah.
Have the meeting.
Yeah, no, I will.
That was the fifteenth on?
Yeah, the fifteenth.
Seven P M.
Okay, we have a meeting on the sixteenth. We could start at five-thirty and have, uh, Parks and Rec, Commission on Aging and Library that night. The three of them, I, I met with them too today because they're talking about, yeah, uh, bringing forward a, an A R P request for the community center in general, uh, about, you know, maybe, uh, the feasibility study to possibly expand that or renovate it. So they might be a good group to call for the fifteenth and we'll just start at five-thirty, so David, um.
On the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, I'm sorry. We've already done the fifteenth.
Right, start at five-thirty.
Fifteenth, we're doing it seven.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the sixteenth at?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
All right, that would be Parks and Rec?
Yes, and I'll try and see if we can, uh, I'll, I'll reach out to Jeff with a couple of dates for, uh, for Board of Ed, uh, twenty-third. I, we can't do the twenty-second because, uh, that's water and sewer. And if I miss water and sewer, you would chair it, but you'd have to be here too, so there'd be nobody to chair the meeting, so. I'll say twenty-third, twenty-first is President's Day. I'll give him a couple of dates, I'll give him. Uh, let me see the twenty-third, let me see what he's got and then I'll, I'll send it out to people. Twenty-third is what I'm gonna propose to him and we do it at seven o'clock.
What day is that?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah. And that would take everybody that we, we would like to see.
I'm just looking at the calendar I got from the Board of Ed. It says Monday, February twenty-eighth is the D O E public hearing for the proposed budget at six P M. Just so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what date is that in?
That was Monday, February twenty-eighth.
Okay. So they've checked, but I was on the Board of Ed, of course, that was a lot of years ago now, but we always had the last meeting in January, we would adopt our budget, so.
Sorry, just checking.
That seems late.
What time, did you say, is that seven?
Hang on one second.
I think the Board of Ed.
That was at six P M.
Like did their budget process a little bit later than they normally do.
Yeah, that seems very late, yeah, because I can remember it being in January.
Why don't we see, we saw, because of the, then, we've, if, if that's tonight, that's the night they'll adopt their budget probably after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Which means we, we're gonna have to, we're gonna wanna adopt our budget on the second of March. So I would think, let's see if we can get Jeff in on the twenty-third of, uh, February, because there, you know, it, we'll at least be able to ask him questions, you know. Tell him it's a dry through for the, a dry run for the, uh, public hearing.
But we've cut their budget after they approved it before.
We, we cannot cut their budget.
We can only advise.
We can only advise, the Board of Selectmen cannot, Board of Finance can.
The Board of Finance, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But under the Board of Finance, they could.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't, we can only make.
The bottom line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right, because.
But fortunately, Board of Fin, Board of Finance, even with the Board of Selectmen over the last several years, for the most part has, you know, get, you know, said, okay, reducing a, a, a department or a, a number and then allowing us to, allowing the Board of Selectmen to decide where those cuts come.
Yeah, it used to be that the Board of Finance would suggest different areas to cut the budget and if the Board of, if the First Selectmen decided to agree with that, that was fine, if not.
Well, First Selectmen doesn't have any input into the Board of Ed's budget.
No, not the Board of Ed budget. The Board of Ed, it was the same thing. It said we would give him a list of things that we thought he could reduce.
Oh, yeah.
And then he would go and he'd do all the things that affected the students the most so that he got the public support.
Okay, um, yeah, but, but the Board of Finance has, has the line item veto over the Board of, over, over the town, so. But anyway, so I'll, I'll try and reach out for the twenty-third for Jeff to see if he'd be willing to make a presentation because, you know, and here again, they can just say, look, it's still preliminary. And then the second is when we will adopt our budget of March. So I would think on the twenty-third after, we could probably, you know, do some deliberation on the twenty-third and then just finish up on the second because I think, you know, we'll have a pretty good idea, uh, by then, unless anyone thinks we need more time to do that. And then I get to do it all again with the Board of Finance, so. And I've, I have warned all the department heads that they are going through two Boards of Finance this time because we have the three of you here who have.
I know.
Have, have that Board of Finance background, so.
Boy.
So, all right, Sandy, on the, uh, twenty-third, we'll shoot for seven o'clock for, uh, for that, so. We'll do all that too, so. And here again, you know, if you have any questions on the budget for me too, please, just give me a call and we'll take care of, and we'll, we'll, we'll address.
Can we dispense with ex officios unless somebody has something really important?
Okay, yeah, we can, any problem with dispensing of ex officios?
No.
Okay. All I was gonna say is bravo to our, uh, firefighters over the last couple of days at Midway Mall. Uh, I heard the call, um, I purposely waited about twenty minutes to head down there so that the people that needed to be there were there. The first guys on the scene knew exactly what to do to try and start limiting it. They called in a second alarm. I can't speak enough, speak highly enough about them for what they did. And last month too, I sent out a thing about the annual report. That's a Board of Finance duty. The last time we printed one was two thousand two, two thousand six was the last time we had one on disk. So I'll talk to Denise Hall about the annual report. And the tour of the public safety building, and I think we'll all agree, that's a, it's a great facility and. great facility and I'm sure the police feel very happy to be in a nice place right now, so. Anyway, and also, Dan Main, our town worker that passed away, there's going to be a memorial service for him probably at the community center sometime in the next couple of weeks. I'll make sure everybody gets aware of that, so. Okay, if there's no public comment, because it can't be because there's no one here to do it. No selectmen's response, we can dispense with the executive session on Halfway Farms and Dominion Building. I have just now been given a date to meet with Dominion and I've just had some minor communications from, on the Halfway property, but nothing that we need to go into executive session for tonight. It's been a long night for all of us, so. Seeing that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, seconded? All is in favor? All right. Thank you for your comments and everything else tonight.
Okay.